Good evenings, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the July 16, 2012 meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. We'll start off this evening with our invocation. The scheduled minister is not here this evening, so I'm going to ask Commissioner O'Neil if he would lead us in the invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Stan.
Father, we gather here tonight to conduct the business of Currituck County. We ask that your wisdom and your spirit and your gentleness will abide here tonight and help us to do what is right for the people that we represent here in Currituck County. We ask it in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next item approval of the agenda. Are there any changes?
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment period. I have one person signed up for public comment period. This is a period where anybody can address items that are not on the agenda. We'll give you up to three minutes to express whatever comments you have, and the only person I have signed up is Ms. Tammy Hamilton. If you'll come forward and give us your name and address for the record and then tell us what you'd like us to hear tonight.
Good evening. My name is Tammy Hamilton. I live at 112 Marshall Court, Moyoc, North Carolina. I am the post commander for the Corporal George D. Matthews, Post 288, here in Coinjock. Okay, first off, let me tell you a story about a young man who wanted to join the Army in 1967 and fight for his country in Vietnam. He was unable to pass his ASVAB test, so he asked local schoolteacher Jane Sneed to tutor him so that he could. Corporal George Dennis Matthews started his tour with the United States Army in Vietnam on December 3, 1967 as a part of B Company, 2nd Battalion, 327th Infantry of the 101 Airborne. On May 13, 1968, he gave the ultimate sacrifice as a result of multiple fragmentation wounds in the Southern Province of South Vietnam. On March 12, 1973, a group of local veterans got a charter from the American Legion Department of North Carolina for the Corporal George D. Matthews, Post 288, American Legion in Coinjock. This is my post. I am a veteran. I served my country in the United States Navy from 1984 to 1995. Back in August of 2006, my ex-father-in-law, Bob Broome, told me he wanted to take me to the post. When we got there, he told me I was now a member as he paid my dues and told me I belonged there. I did not feel like I was a veteran in the same sense as my fellow comrades, as I did not go in country, I did not fight any wars, as I was just a dispersing clerk in the Navy. I paid people. They watched their friends get wounded and some give the ultimate sacrifice. But since I've been there, I've met a very special group of people that put themselves second to others in need of help. I have watched as my fellow legionnaires gave their all to help veterans in need of a ride to the Hampton VA or a meal because they couldn't afford one or just simply to talk. They did not stop with the veterans in our community. They've supported the local Boy Scouts, local baseball team, purchased and distributed school supplies for the local children, provided Thanksgiving dinners to those in need, purchased gift cards to be given to Currituck County services to ensure local children did not go without Christmas. In 2007, we formed the Legion Riders Charter for our post. My husband and I were members of that charter until we had to sell our bike. Our first duty as a group was to lay a wreath in support of Wreaths Across America. It was on December 15, 2007. I remember that day being really bitter cold as I drove the post commander's van with the wreath in it. The group met at Mule Skinner's in Barco for the ride to the Veterans Park in Coinjock. I felt so proud to drive that van, but at the same time, all I could think about was how these guys were riding these bikes in this bitter cold. After everything was over, the numerous times when we did all that, I asked everybody, I said, "How could you do that? I'm nice and warm in this truck." It was needed. It needed to be done, was what they told me. Since then, there have been numerous times when we've assisted in funeral escorts at the request of veterans' families. Our Legion Riders are a very diverse group. They come from all over the country, as most veterans do. Some are retired schoolteachers, deputies, housewives, and so on. This group is formed from the members of the American Legion as well as its charters, the Sons of the American Legion, and the Auxiliary. Our Legion Riders have teamed up with other local bike groups to assist in raising monies for our disabled veterans as well as raising money for local charities such as the Benjamin House or the local Hope Line. The Legion Riders of Post 288 are currently working on the Gold Star and Blue Star banner programs and ensuring families get those banners. I was asked to run for the Office of Adjutant back in 2008. I took the position with great pride, as I was not able to do and assist in a lot of the programs, as I work a full-time job. Since taking that position, I have met a large number of great people. My husband and I consider these people a part of our family. My husband and I, Brad, have supported every function we were able to, from my husband cooking in the kitchen. They won't let me in the kitchen, not unless it's to take out the trash or do the dishes. But I was usually the one you almost always met at the door. They had me hold my handout to take your money. Go figure. But I got to meet everybody as they came in those doors. Even with the recent events of our losing our Bingo and Turkey Shoot fundraising events, we have continued to support the four pillars of the American Legion: Veterans Affairs and Rehabilitation, National Security, Americanism, and Children and Youth. And we'll continue to do so as long as we are able. We have recently sent a young lady from Currituck County High School to the 2012 North Carolina American Legion Student Trooper Program. We have also sent a young boy from Currituck County High School to the 2012 Tarheel Boys State Delegate Program. For those of you that may have heard it on the radio, we had a sock hop. That sock hop was to assist in raising monies to purchase school supplies for the 2012-2013 school year for children in the county. We do this every year. The Corporal George D. Matthews, Post 288, American Legion in Coinjock is a very important part of our community. For over 39 years, we have supported our local veterans and community and will continue to do so. As I close this, I would like to ask for a workshop with the Sheriff's Department, the county attorney, and our local post to amend the language on the county ordinance, Section 9.1, to allow our post to continue with our Turkey Shoot. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Thank you for your service.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
May I ask you a question, please?
Yes, sir.
Have you been in touch with your state commander, Commander Richard?
I was there when the phone calls were made. All that was done from an email that was put out by our State Department, which was two conversations merged into one, and that has all been clarified.
Okay.
I was there when the phone calls were made.
All right, thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments for public comment period? If you're hearing none, we'll close the public comment period and move on to the first order of the agenda. Public hearings, public hearing in action, PB 12-13, Krabby's Restaurant, request to amend the new Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 5, Development Standards, and Chapter 10, Definitions and Measurement, to allow off-premise directional signs for properties located adjacent to the Atlantic Intracoastal Waterway. Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a tax amendment request submitted by Mr. Terry Miles, owner of Krabby's Restaurant, and the proposal is to allow off-premise directional signage for businesses located along the intracoastal waterway, as you mentioned. And this request is being reviewed under the new Unified Development Ordinance. And to give a little context on this specific request and the tax amendment, Krabby's Restaurant has an existing 54-square-foot sign located at the intersection of US 158 and North Guard Road, and you can see on the map the approximate location of the existing off-premise sign. Excuse me. And then you can also see the location of Krabby's Restaurant along the waterway, and we've kind of shown the travel route highlighted in blue, so you can see the nature of how you would get from the highway to the restaurant. The sign that is there now currently was permitted under a previous sign ordinance and is non-conforming under our current ordinance. Mr. Miles expressed an interest in replacing the existing sign with a larger sign, which is why he's here tonight. Staff advised him that replacing the sign with a sign of the same size would be fine. There's no issues with that. We allow that under the ordinance. However, asking for an increase in the signage is what prompted or has brought the tax amendment in front of you tonight for consideration. The amendment submitted by Mr. Miles requests a maximum size of 100 square feet. On the photograph there, you can see the existing signage along with what is approximately a 46-square-foot increase. And again, that's approximately the scale, not to say he would orient it exactly that way, but that just gives you an idea of the differences in sizes. During the drafting process, staff did encourage Mr. Miles to propose an amendment that was narrow in scope and limited the applicability of this allowance throughout the county, because as you know, tax amendments apply countywide, not necessarily to an individual property. And some of the things that are included in this amendment that narrows the scope is that it requires authorization by the Board of Commissioners and that the business be located adjacent to the intracoastal waterways. So those are unique factors to this amendment. And I'll note that when the previous sign was permitted under an old ordinance, those are the types of standards that were in place in the old ordinance. We kind of carried forward some of the original provisions and put those in front of you tonight and encouraged Mr. Miles to do that. Staff is sympathetic to the difficult economic times that businesses face and our current economic climates, and we appreciate that. However, increasing the size of off-premise signage is contrary to the policy direction or land use plan, and I want to read the policy specifically to you from the land use plan. Policy CA 5 states that "an attractive, less commercialized landscape, particularly along heavily traveled land and water routes, is essential to the tourist-based economy of the area. The placement of additional billboards and off-site advertising signs shall not be permitted in Currituck County." The amendment proposed by Mr. Miles is narrow in scope. However, due to the policy direction in the land use plan, staff cannot support this tax amendment request, as it may increase or may create a precedent for increasing off-premise directional sign or off-premise signage in the county, which is contrary to our land use plan. I'll note, the planning board heard this request at their June meeting. The planning board did recommend approval of the request as submitted. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Mr. Woody.
Just, if I might, Mr. Woody, you said that the staff did give directions to Mr. Miles about what he should ask for?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Woody, what kind of precedent is this going to set? I know the sign ordinance that was developed by a group of stakeholders sometime back come up with an ordinance. I, per se, don't have a problem with the sign enlargement. I have a problem when we change something for the benefit of one person and you've got so many other people up and down the corridor who, just because they're not on the intracoastal waterway, I mean, how about Barry's at Walnut Island? Suppose he comes up and says he wants to do the same thing, or, I mean, numerous businesses throughout the county. And I'm just, the precedent that it sets to me is something we need to look into.
And that was staff's concern as well, is you, as this ordinance is written specifically, it's really very narrow in its scope in that the business has to be on the intracoastal waterway. But the precedent would be then if other businesses that are not visible from the highway may have unique circumstances too, then they may follow this lead and bring additional language in front of you.
Mr. Woody, or, Mr. Chairman, if I could. I remember back several years ago, the board had a particular ordinance that specifically addressed businesses along the intracoastal waterway that allowed for differentiation because they were along the waterway and they were off the highway. And I believe when the new ordinance was adopted, those differentiations were done away with. Is that not correct?
It actually, those were done away with during a sign committee process. So it wasn't the ordinance. We just adopted it a couple of months ago, but yes, previous to that, that's correct.
But previous to that, those businesses along there were allowed to have a differentiated sized sign because of the circumstances of them being off the highway. And then I will say one other thing, and whether this is a good idea, a bad idea, that's, each member has to make their own decision. You're talking 46-foot, square foot, about the approximate size of a sheet of plywood, correct?
Yeah, I think, a little bigger, yeah. I think sheets of plywood are eight by four, yeah.
Okay. Another thing that I would note is the DOT has come along and put a huge sign, a big post and a sign, I think it even shows on our photograph where you can see that it does inhibit some of the sightline coming north to south. And so I understand Mr. Idlet's concerns, I understand staff's concerns, but I do believe this is written narrow enough that it does not apply except for intracoastal waterway businesses. Is that correct?
As it's written, that's correct, yes.
So Mr. Miles wouldn't be able to rent this out to Joe's Crab House up in Chesapeake? It would have to be used for the business along the intracoastal waterway, correct?
Yes.
No more questions?
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Mr. Woody, if this is adopted, what, the process then is, he applies for a special use permit?
No, I would, it's not a use permit, it's authorization, and I would assume that by the board adopting this tax amendment, you're authorizing the larger sign.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Mr. Woody, it's my understanding, and Mr. Miles is out here, I think he can confirm this, he had to buy this piece of property to put this sign on it. He owns this property, is that correct?
Yes, I believe under the original ordinance, that was a requirement that the sign be on property owned under the same ownership as the business, and we did carry that provision forward, so yes.
So he does own the property, he's wanting to put his sign on?
Yes, that is my understanding. Mr. Miles has provided information that says he owns the property, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
And you said it was carried forward as part of the ordinance?
We did, we've included that in this ordinance. That was part of the original ordinance, was that dual ownership, though.
Okay, well, I share the same concern that Mr. Idlet has in that it is an exceptional circumstance to have a business out of the sight of the road on the intracoastal waterway, and I can see how it is limited, so only those businesses would be affected. But I have the same problem, you know, there are other businesses that are out of the sightline of the highway which would constitute exceptional circumstances, and this would be discriminating against them if we're to offer the same, not to offer the same option to them, but to allow essentially doubling the size of the sign. Of course, on the converse side, you've got other signs down there, you know, right up at Kevin's Cindy's Kitchen signs, about the same size as what this one would be expanded to that, the big 12-layer chocolate cake sign. So I can't say that it's not in keeping with what's there already, just that I'm concerned about the limitation that other businesses that might be in similar circumstances, just not on the waterway, would be prohibited from enjoying the same benefit.
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. Again, I have no problem with the sign. I have a problem with the fairness. If it's applicable to one, it should be applicable to everyone who was not in the sightline of the corridor.
Well, that's essentially what I'm saying, and I feel like here again, that's going to open up a whole set of new possible applications for people that are going to wonder the same thing and how we're going to address those.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I'm just trying to rethink this. I can't think of so many businesses that are off the corridor that, or, you know, Idlet Road or Poplar Branch Road or whatever, that depends on retail business to come in, and I think that's what he's applying for, people come through the front door. It's not something, a product that he ships out or trucks out or whatever, he has to get people in the front door. That's the concern I have, and if other people fit this mold, I think it's something we need to consider. I think it's hard enough now to get people in your front door.
Well, I understand that, and I know, and I believe what most of them do really is they get a billboard, run a billboard someplace and use that to direct traffic if they're off the corridor. In fact, it was one of the interesting situations with the Surf Zone right there in Grandy, the fact that he couldn't use the billboard on his own property for his own advertising because it constituted an on-premise sign, it was too large. So we've got some interesting, I won't say inconsistencies, I think the ordinance is probably consistent, but there's some unusual applications that...
If I may, going back to what Commissioner O'Neil brought up about the original ordinance that allowed, it was recognizing that the businesses on the intracoastal waterway could not depend or vitality just on the intracoastal waterway. They would have to attract traffic off of the highway. That's why it was done, and the only reason it was done. It wasn't to single anybody out or anything like that.
So if somebody were to open a restaurant, for say, down on Poplar Branch Road?
It's different circumstance.
I know it's a different circumstance, but it couldn't be seen from 168, 158, you know, they could be seen from Poplar Branch, but I don't see where the application would be different.
We discriminate against things like this all throughout the ordinance. There are special needs and special needs. We try to help businesses meet those special needs, and that's why it was done originally.
I would submit that you have a different signed ordinance for the Outer Banks, and actually, under that signed ordinance, I believe you allow a larger sign than what he's asking for. Is that not correct?
The on-premise signage on the Outer Banks for a shopping center would be larger, yes. Or, no, his sign would be larger, excuse me, let me think. Yes, the shopping center signage, on-premise shopping center signage in the Outer Banks is larger than this sign. This sign, however, is larger than individual lot on-premise signage on the Outer Banks, so it kind of falls in the middle of the on-premise signs.
Any other questions or comments? Well, not hearing any other discussion like that. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve PB 12-13.
You have this advertised as a public hearing.
You have to have a public hearing.
I'm sorry, okay. All right, do we have anybody who wants to address this particular option? I'm sorry, sir. Come forward, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Terry Miles. I'm the owner of Krabby's Restaurant Midway Marina Motel. Twenty-two years ago, my wife and I built the marina. We hired and employed 33 people. Since then, the economy has changed and changed drastically. We were a $2 million-a-year business. We're now $200,000-a-year business. I now have five employees. My wife and I are unpaid because we can't afford to pay ourselves. What we're asking for is a sign so people will at least be able to know we're there. There are so many illegal signs up and down that corridor. I'm coming to you and asking you politely and nicely to work with me as a business that is failing like a lot of other businesses are right now, to help me regain some of my business. It's a very simple thing. I can't afford the price of a billboard. I don't have a deep-pocket man behind me that pays for all my billboards. We pay for everything out of our pocket, and that's it. It's just us. There is no one else. If you opened a restaurant back on Idlet Road, I'd tell you, you're out of your rabbit-ass mind. You have to have people to support a restaurant. We used to do a quarter of a million dollars every summer in small boat business. I don't do $10,000 a year now in small boat business. You have to put money in your car to go to work, to pay for your home and feed your children, but you do not have to put any money in your boat to go play, and that's what's happened, Mr. Chairman. People don't go out and play, they don't have the money. A lot of the fixed-income people here, every Friday night, used to be in our restaurant eating. Then it went to every other Friday night. Now I don't even see them because they can't afford to go out and eat. Well, we can't afford to stay in business if we don't get a little help. I had to pay $2,000 to buy that little piece of property, which should be against the law to start with. The state's a bunch of morons, but that's neither here nor there. Then they put that great big monster sign up. You don't even notice my sign. I have customers coming in, telling me they've been going by my sign for seven years, never noticed it, because you don't see it when you're doing 70 miles an hour, and that's what they're doing when they're heading to the Outer Banks. You come this way, coming north, you have a sign there that says Elizabeth City. Coinjock blocks my sign completely until you're right on top of my sign. Then you're at all wondering what the hell this thing is up here in the sky flashing at you, and you still don't see my sign. You all want my tax dollars, and I always send them in. I hate doing it, but I do it. Help me get more money to send to you. I'm just asking you to help us. We're a good, clean, honest mom-and-pop business, and we're asking to put up a legal sign. Take a ride down there. Look around. There's one right across the street from me that is illegal as can be, but nobody seems to pay attention. It's been there for two months.
I've seen it.
Yeah, but see, I had to go buy the property because I believe in doing things legal and right, so I don't have to worry about some guy in a suit coming up my walkway, wanting to find me or arrest me or some nonsense like that. That's all I'm asking for. I'm asking for a chance to help our restaurant survive this economy. Once everything gets straight and we get back making money, I'll take the damn sign down for you, but for right now, I need it, and that's what I'm asking for.
Do you have any questions? Anybody have any questions, Mr. Miles? Comments? Thank you, Mr. Miles.
Thank you.
Does anybody else want to address this issue while the public hearing is over? Captain, go ahead.
Do I got to state my name and all again?
Please.
Tammy Hamilton, 112 Marshall Court, Moyoc, North Carolina.
Thank you.
Terry Miles is the little man. We got this big sign to promote all this tourism, to help the tourism. The tourism wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the little man. They're the ones that keep the businesses going here. If everything that's been going on, the tourists say they're not going to come down, whatnot, I get tired of sitting in that traffic. Saturday, when I was coming home from Clemens, North Carolina, it took me 20 minutes to go from Shortcock Road to get to the post to a membership roundup, because everybody's stopping, looking at stuff. You know, that's fine. Let them see a sign. He's a part of our community. He's what makes our community, and we need to stand behind the little man that makes our community. That's what it all started from, and we need to remember that.
And I'm not related to her.
No, he didn't pay me either.
No. I can't afford it.
All right. Does anybody else want to make a comment, in the public comment period?
You're quite welcome.
Mr. Chairman, just one more time. I am not against the sign.
I understand.
That's not the issue.
Now, that's exactly the point I was making too, with the same point you were making. I have no problem with the sign because there's already a sign there that's as big as that. The two things that I would suggest, one is that people don't see signs that have been the same for a long time. We just miss them. Your mind is doing something else going by. Changing it periodically helps do that, which is, of course, what billboards do. And I understand what you're saying about billboards. It's not an inexpensive proposition, and you do have a problem because that DOT sign is going to be changing all the time. It's drawing people's attention up there. So my suggestion would be, if you get permission to put this up, is do something that is indeed going to get the attention of the people, you know, and a sign that's consistently the same all the time may not be the solution to that. Maybe somebody can offer some...
Our intention was to put up a new sign. That's why we're requesting now something different, a little...
Yeah, but the concern that Mr. Idlet and I both expressed was the fact that we would probably be dealing with similar issues that would come forward, and I did make an illustration of exactly what could happen. That doesn't mean that we're not willing to recognize that and go forward with it. We do precedents sometimes, quite often for that reason.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make it as a point. I probably am going to support this, but I just wanted to make a point. When it comes about, we're going to have to deal with it.
Okay, we're hearing no other public comments being made, then I'll close the public comment period and then ask the board for whatever... comment period, and then ask the board for whatever its reference would be, Mr. Petrie, were you going to offer a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve PB 12-13 due to its consistency with the 2006 land use plan, and that the request is reasonable in the public interest and promotes orderly growth and development, and I'd like to move for approval.
Second. Got a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Public hearing in action, PB 12-05, Currituck County, request a text amendment to correct and clarify language in the following chapters of the new unified development ordinance, Chapter Two, Administration, Chapter Four, Use Standards, Chapter Five, Development Standards, Chapter Six, Subdivision and Infrastructure Standards, Chapter Eight, Nonconformities, Chapter Ten, Definitions and Measurements. Mr. Woody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board of Commissioners in the county adopted our new UDO on April 2nd of this year, it does become effective on January 1st, 2013, so we're in a dual-use period now, which means folks can choose the old ordinance or the new ordinance, and we have folks choosing both, so we've got some applications coming through under the new ordinance. One thing staff's been doing, as we review applications under the new ordinance, and as we find, as we start to apply it and find things, we're going to bring you a list of corrections from time to time over the next year, to make sure we're getting all the typos or anything that's maybe not working as intended, get that in front of you, and hopefully get it fixed, particularly before our new UDO is the only option. What's before you tonight is eighteen items that we've found, either staff has, or the planning board, or even some members of the public have pointed out to us. Most of these items that we're asking you to approve tonight are pretty straightforward, there's nothing particularly substantive about the items. Oftentimes, they're just typos, or striking words, or even adding some more flexibility to some of the standards. I'm not going to read through all eighteen of these individually, but they're in your packets. What I do want to do is hit a couple of them real quickly, ones that I think may be of higher interest to the board, I'm going to do that, then after that, I'll answer questions on the ones I've reviewed, or answer any questions you may have on the other ones. But let me start with number one, because this is a different one from Currituck County. The single-family mainland zoning district is our single-family, our residential district here on the mainland. One thing we did different in the new UDO is we've allowed duplexes in that zoning district. We did require a use permit for those, because we weren't sure quite yet that Currituck County was ready to start having duplexes popping up without any kind of review or public hearing. The planning board actually suggested that we allow duplexes on lots greater than 20,000 square feet to be approved administratively in our single-family district, and then duplexes on lots that are less than 20,000 square feet, which tend to be our smaller, denser neighborhoods, those require a use permit. So, what number one does, for example, is it actually takes the duplex allowance in the single-family mainland zoning district, and allows administrative approval of some of those. So, that's an example of something that's probably more flexible with the use of duplexes. Another item I wanted to mention is, one thing we've done in the new, this is number five, we've done in the new UDO, is we've allowed, or we've set up a system where, when a developer brings forward a subdivision, they've got to establish a reserve fund, or a fund in the name of the HOA, that then, when the subdivision is turned over to the HOA, there's some money that's available in that fund for the HOA to assume maintenance and hopefully be successful with their subdivision. Originally, what we did in that is we required that ten percent of the infrastructure cost be available in that fund, or a fixed amount of $10,000, whichever was greater. We realized that in some of the really small subdivisions, putting up, or collecting enough dues to equal $10,000 is very, very difficult, so, for example, on this one, we're recommending striking the $10,000 and just using ten percent, which I think makes that reserve fund a little more flexible, a little more, it matches the size of the subdivision, actually, instead of having a fixed amount. Another one I wanted to mention to you, and again, I'm just picking some of the ones I think are of importance particularly, is number thirteen, this is something the board actually asked staff to do, and we're bringing this forward, is, right now, when you build a subdivision in Currituck County, you have to pay your water connection fees when the final plat's recorded. So, that means if you have a ten-lot subdivision, it connects to the water system, you'll have to pay $60,000 to record your final plat. What number thirteen does, it moves that fee to the building permit stage, so instead of paying that fee upfront with the recordation of the final plat, the builder or the developer's able to pay the tap fee as they apply for the building permit, so it kind of spreads out that fee over the course of the subdivision, instead of front-loading the fee. And the last thing I wanted to point out specifically was number eighteen, we've had this discussion, too, is we've clarified that on our Board of Adjustment, that when we have members that are appointed, they are initially appointed as alternates, and then the members with seniority automatically rotate into positions as regular members. So, again, that's another amendment that you guys had brought to our attention. There's other amendments in this list, and I'm happy to answer or explain any of those in detail if you would like me to.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like clarification on what number four means.
In our UDO right now, and again, this is kind of a current standard that moved forward, our new UDO, old and new, we require that if you're on a piece of property, and you're waterfront property, if you've got a soundside neighborhood, for example, you've got to provide parking for boats, like a boat storage area. What, and this is the planning board's recommendation, which I thought was a good one, and again, that subdivisions of twenty or more lots, so some of the larger subdivisions, instead of saying that a waterfront property with lot sizes less than an acre have to have boat storage, it was modified to say that a subdivision with a lot size less than 20,000 square feet anywhere in the mainland has to have a boat storage area. So, for example, when the subdivider comes in and is doing a small lot subdivision, which ordinarily probably doesn't have room to store boats and things in the lot yards, the subdivider sets up an area where boats can be stored. That's pretty common, if you think about subdivisions like Rivers Edge, they have an area like that, Eagle Creek has an area like that.
Side area to put the boats and stuff in, in your yard, it's over there.
Yes, sir, and it goes into the open space, what counts as open space. But we figured if you have an acre lot, you probably have enough room on your lot to store a boat, it's probably more relevant for the smaller lot subdivisions.
Okay, I understand.
Well, in fact, most of the people in Rivers Edge, and I think lots there, about eighteen thousand average, most of them keep the boats and RVs in their yards, because there's no covenant against it.
Yeah, and this wouldn't prevent you from doing that, this just makes the developer set aside an area that does have some allowance.
But it's allowable open space.
Yeah.
Okay. I had one other comment about that, too, the funding of HOAs, it escapes me why they do not require a capital contribution on the sale of the lots, which could be part of that contractual deed, which would fund the needs of those, because most of these HOAs are woefully underfunded when they are set up, in particular, when you look at the replacement reserves.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Woody, I like number seventeen.
Number seventeen, I think is a good thing, it adds flexibility. Right now, in Currituck County, the height of a structure can't exceed 35 feet, and that's at the mean roof heights, that means you take the tip of the roof, and the eve of the roof, go halfway in between, and that's got to be 35 feet. What we've found is that when people are building three-story houses, particularly on the beach, oftentimes, when they're having to elevate two or three feet to meet the base flood elevation, it compacts the roof, so it makes the architecture look kind of odd. What this does, it gives you up to a three-foot credit for having to raise your house to meet base flood elevation, which is a good thing, because we're giving folks, we're incentivizing actually meeting the flood ordinance, which is good for our county's property tax base. And also note one more thing, that the building code recently changed to require now that you have to have a freeboard one foot above base flood elevation. So, what the building code says now, if your base flood elevation is 10, you've got to have your house elevated to 11, so the building code just added another foot to it, so we've given a little flexibility in the top end for height.
Well, you answered my question, I was wondering what the max would be now.
Yeah, 38, basically, to meet base flood.
Now, let me ask, why is there a height limit? I know the answer, but I want you to explain it to everybody.
We have a height limit in Currituck County because of the limitations of our fire apparatus, and just, that's probably the original reason for the height limit, I think, and then also, I think there's some aesthetic appeal to our rural, kind of low-density community as well. So, it's a combination of public safety and aesthetics, I believe.
Well, I, because I had the same problem with some homes that I built in Rivers Edge that were approximately one inch less than the 35 feet in a flood zone like in, but my thought is, it was done originally primarily from a public safety standpoint, because that's as high as the trucks, the fire trucks could reach, but we're going to let people in a flood zone extend beyond that, why wouldn't we apply the same height limitation to everybody? Because the fire danger is the same for everybody.
The new ordinance has what's called an administrative adjustment, and it also allows you to have flexible, add up to, up to, actually, a 20% increase in your height, it's just with that administrative adjustment, you have to file an application with staff, and it has to be reviewed and approved. This exception just does it outright for base flood cases, so we do have some flexibility in the height outside of base flood now, and we checked with the fire marshal on that.
Okay, my point was just that it would appear that being consistent, if we're going to ignore the safety feature, which was the primary one in one case, just, you know, go ahead and ignore it for all, because, you know, essentially, the, I think really, the eve line is going to be the determining factor as far as the fire danger is concerned.
And we've got an exception that allows that, and other cases outside of the base flood, it just seemed like the base flood is almost like, it's something you have to do, it's a penalizing factor, so we wanted to make that very easy to have some flexibility on.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Woody?
Mr. Woody, referencing number 10 about the sandwich signs and the tent signs, October 1st through May 15th, I thought, does this apply to Corolla? I thought we had decided that with the new agreement, that they are not to be applied, you know, year-round.
Yeah, that's still the case, and I'll give you the context, when we were drafting the new ordinance, at that point, we were allowing sandwich board signs in the summer, so when the new ordinance was written, it reflected them being allowed year-round, but as you know, that allowance expired, so the new ordinance was never updated to reflect the expiration and add back in those dates that prohibited in the summer. This is basically taking the dates and putting them back in.
Are you telling me that sandwich board signs will now be allowed in Corolla after October?
It will be prohibited in the summer.
I know, but they will, are you saying they will be allowed from October 1st through May 15th?
Yes, and they always have been.
Okay, okay.
That's consistent with our historical treatment of sandwich board signs.
All right, just to refresh my memory, when we came up with this one-year allowance for them to be there in the summer...
Two years.
Two years.
Two years, yeah. I'm just saying, I'm scared because I'm, I just got, I have this gut feeling that they think the sandwich boards are gone, and that's, you know, and I hope I'm wrong.
I don't think we ever said they were gone for good.
I know, but I mean, in the winter months, that's, you know, I'm just...
No, they stood up here in the public hearing and said, we use the sandwich boards to find out where they are and who's...
As a matter of fact, one of the big opponents to the sandwich board said he liked them in the wintertime, so he could find where he wanted to go.
Okay, I'm just saying, I'm not trying to, don't shoot the messenger here, I'm just saying that, I just want to make sure that we're consistent and everybody's on board, so.
I think this puts us back where we've been and where it needs to be, so.
Okay.
Mr. Wood brought up a good point a while ago, I mean, this, on this, let's see, which one was it?
Seventeen.
Seven?
Seventeen.
Yeah, seventeen. Don't this more or less reflect, or only apply to the Corolla and the off-road area?
Primarily, yes, that's where we see it at.
Okay, and the off-road area, I mean, if public safety and fire protection is of a concern, well, we've got a big issue, because they have no elevated fire streams whatsoever in there. No way to get a ladder truck up that beach, I can tell you.
I think they just assume anything catches fire appears to come burned down anyway, so...
No, but I mean, I was just bringing up the point, so.
Mr. Chairman, on this number seventeen, has any thought, have we put any thought into looking at maybe allowing for a higher height if they would go in and put a sprinkler system in a house as an incentive?
That's an option. I want to look at the county attorney and make sure, is that something we can do through zoning?
Well, we certainly can't require it. I don't see why you can't make it an incentive in order to provide for greater height than the, in exchange, you will put in greater fire or life safety measures within your structure.
I mean, that's the way I would like to see it done, because that way, you give them either option A, option B, and anyway...
Option B.
Either way, you know, we're going to come out okay with it, I think, but just might have more flexibility in some of the architectural styles that we might see developed.
In fact, if you're going to apply it that way county-wide, it should be a proviso that if you want to exceed the equipment capability of the fire department serving your area, then you've got to provide some fire protection in the structure.
Mr. Chairman, and also, in that thought, with allowing a sprinkler system, what about the requirements of the water source for the sprinkler system?
Well, they would have to show they could flow water as the system needed it.
So, that would be part of the requirement with the sprinkler systems.
It'd have to be an engineered system, Vance can speak to that better than I can, but they, you don't put a sprinkler system in if you do not have adequate water stream to...
Well, an average sprinkler head flows about 15 gallons of water a minute, and generally, one to two sprinkler heads will put out a fire that's, just a normal type fire, will put it out, so, but still, you've got to have the capacity there to go a whole lot further than that, and that's one of the things that concerns me with the water supply in the off-road area. People's wells are going dry now, and it costs $1,000 a time, a pop, to get a well put in up there now, as well as the rest of the county, I assume, so, but anyhow.
Well, I don't, I don't think you really want to alter, right now, what he's proposing, because that's based on flood elevations. If you want to go beyond that, then I think that's where you need to go with the incentive, but this is just to address the roof line, you get some very strange roof lines if you don't allow them to go above that flood elevation to get the extra story that they're after.
Well, my thought would be to go ahead and agree to the text amendment as it is, and then provide him some additional amendments at some time in the future, based on these suggestions we're discussing.
As Mr. Neal said, I totally understand what you say, but if the reason that 35 feet was the precedent that's always been set was because of public safety and fire, well, then, if we're exceeding it, then we need to kind of put it all in context at one time, I think.
Yeah, and I think making a trade-off for doing it is a good compromise.
Well, where did 35 foot come from?
Height of a ladder truck.
I don't know where it originally came from, my understanding...
The height of a ground ladder.
Yeah, but I want to say, and when speaking with our fire marshal, I don't know if I can speak entirely for the off-road area, but in our discussions, he felt comfortable going slightly above 35 with the apparatus we have, so that's kind of where we came at this. We tried to, but we tried not to go, we tried not to take a huge leap, that's why it's just three feet, but if you'd like us to take it and explore in a little more depth to go higher, we can certainly do that and bring something back. And maybe I can get a little more context on the original 35 feet, and maybe it was just ground ladders, I'm not sure that knows that.
It's only 35 feet above the flood plain line.
I don't have a problem supporting it, I'm just bringing up points, is all.
I prefer us to go with what we got, and then bring something back to change it, if that's what...
Take the motion.
Because you may stop somebody from, that's in the process or whatever, that...
I understand, I understand.
Maybe we have a public hearing.
Do I have any public comment related to this particular matter, since it's a public hearing? Hearing now, now I'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve PB 12-05 due to consistency with the 2006 land use plan, and the request is reasonable and in the public interest and promotes orderly in growth and development.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, moving on. New business, board appointments, appointment to the East Alamo Memorial Regional Library.
Mr. Chairman, I was contacted today by Mr. George Gregory, who's already serving on our library board, and said he would like to serve on the Earl, so I make that as a motion.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Commissioner, report, Mr. Martin. I'd only like to remind everybody, tomorrow is a special election day, and that it is important, and so, don't forget to vote. The polls will open at six o'clock?
Six thirty.
Six thirty. Thank you.
Close at seven, right?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Chairman, don't we have a Board of Adjustment appointment that's up tonight as well?
I know, man. No, no.
Now, I want to step forward, Mr. Idley, to accept that. I've asked several people, and we just cannot, I can't find, like most of you, people who are willing to serve.
I understand, I just wanted to make sure it was brought up.
That's what it is, it is an alternate appointment, and that I would love to see someone to give a call or fill out one of the forms from the county webpage, so that we could find those people who are interested in serving.
Mr. Etheridge, comment?
I attended the fireworks show and family day over at Whalehead Club on the 4th of July, and it's probably the biggest crowd we have had ever, if not one of the biggest. But the thing that impressed me about it was the family atmosphere, and I know Commissioner Gilbert was there also, but that's what we have been working for in our tourism promotion, the family atmosphere of Curry Tuck County. And I watched families from grandfathers and grandmothers, right on down to grandchildren, all together, and everybody seemed to have a great time, and the amazing thing about it was that night, in terms of family, there was no alcohol involved, and it showed that people can have a good time without alcohol, when they go back and look at the family and what they're trying to do. And, you know, I heard a lot of people say, "We got to come back next year, this was fantastic." So, my hats off to Tourism Department, Jason Winks and his staff, the Sheriff's Office, and all the personnel that worked over there.
I have to second that. Sheriff's Office did a wonderful job, because cars were landing both sides of the road from Winks all the way down to the sports center. I watched it from Winks.
I watched it from the boat. I was one of those bobbing out there where they were shooting off the fireworks over our heads, and it's awesome.
This raises a question I want, I think we need to find out. I understand that we can't let a boat in the boat basin during the fireworks show because of the Coast Guard or something. Are you aware of that, Mr. Scanlon?
I'm not aware of that, as it applies to the boat basin, it certainly applies to the boat ramp and the docks.
Well, I was down Manio Thursday, and they were talking about their 4th of July show, the boats were pulled right up within 100 feet of where they were shooting the fireworks off, and docked all around Marsh's Light. And I asked one of the people that was involved in it, and they said, "We've never heard of that, nobody's ever said anything to us on that." And, you know, we have that boat basin, why people can't come over there and tie their boats up and enjoy that atmosphere, that family atmosphere during the day, and then watch the fireworks, and then get in their boats and come back home? We need to look into that before another year.
Well, the size of boat makes a difference, because it has been filled in, and we need that canal, and that whole basin dredged, but we just can't get through the Corps of Engineers that we need to do that.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neill, comments?
Just a couple. Mr. Woody, I talked with several folks in Moyoc over the last several weeks about the small area plan that we had talked about, and I was wondering when we were going to advertise and start that process.
We'll be prepared to go up there in late August, early September. We've got to get a couple of things off our plate in the next month, but that's on our work list, that's about the timeframe, we'll be able to get up there and start having some meetings.
I just didn't know what to tell folks. And the other thing is, is I've ridden over where the little small bridge is there on Tulsa Creek Road, and I think that if we're going to be talking about a park in the Moyoc area, that is absolutely an excellent place to have a passive-type park, like picnic tables and low-impact type of recreation. And then the parcel that the county has out behind the assisted living would be perfect for like tennis courts, soccer fields, baseball field, something like that, instead of trying to put it all compacted in one area that maybe we ought to look at how we do provide, I mean, since every other area of the county's got one, it's not something new, but that maybe a passive-type park down by the water or the creek, and then some type of high-intensity recreation on the 20 acres that the county has by the assisted living facility would probably be a good way to.
Is that right there Shingle Landing, right?
Yeah, somewhere along in there. And then if that 20 acres was ever needed for another facility, you don't have structures there, you've just got ball fields that you could simply move somewhere else and do what you need to do there, if in the future we had to do something, so. Just, that's all I had. Thank you, sir.
Staley?
A couple of things. I sent each of you a copy this afternoon of correlation of stuff the Wild Horse Group has been doing. Just wanted to show, I mean, we talk about community, and we talk about, like Owen was saying a while ago, the family atmosphere, but you read that, and you'll see that they do a lot of things as well, and I just wanted to recognize him for that. Also, I would like to thank Mr. Scanlon and Mr. Winks and all of his staff for all the assistance they give to the Knights Island Ruin Club and their Peach Festival. They were Johnny on the spot and took care of a lot of different things over there, and helped out a tremendous amount, so just wanted to thank everyone for that as well. That's all.
Mr. Petry?
In conjunction with Mr. Martin and Mr. Etheridge were talking about the Whalehead Basin, Lieutenant Banks, Jason Banks, talked to me after the fireworks, and he asked about where do we stand with dredging the basin, and as Mr. Martin said, I think we've been working on it for 20 years. I hope we're still in the process of trying to get in touch with Senator Burr and Senator Hagan, because it appears that now we've got a public safety issue with fire or police and rescue getting in and out of the basin or having a place to launch. I know that not too long ago, they had to walk out in the mud to save a boat that was capsized, so I hope we're still ongoing with that effort to go to Washington and pursue this, because now we're getting bigger issues, so that's the only thing.
Ms. Gilbert?
I just also want to reiterate what Commissioner Etheridge said about the 4th of July celebration, that was a great experience, family-oriented, great entertainment, and my hats off to the staff and everybody that worked to put that event together. Also, during the 4th of July week, I had an opportunity to spend three different days down in the off-road area on the beach. Commissioner Idlet took me on a tour of some of the roads that, of the maintenance that's been done, and I just want to commend, you know, the progress that's going on in the off-road area, on the street maintenance, and also the driving pattern on the beach. You know, I've heard year after year how, you know, congested, how terrible, how, you know, it's just chaotic. I was down there three different days, Sunday, Friday, and Saturday of the holiday week, and the driving pattern, the cleanliness, the people that were, you know, responsible, you know, very eventless experience, but very, very fun experience, so.
Mr. Chairman?
And thanks, Mr. Idlet, for the grand tour.
As Ms. Gilbert said, this year has been very unique. Kathy and I have spent a lot of time on the beach, and I've done a lot of observations. The traffic issues certainly have improved. Most people are using the model that was set up by the committee that we put together, which I think is a good thing. People and their children are getting down right at the water line, they're parking in the center of the beach, you've got a drive line in between that, don't have kids running back and forth, and then you've got the high-beach drive line as well. So, I think it's working. I want to commend the Sheriff's Department, the additional deputies up there have done an excellent job, and I certainly appreciate it, and I thank them every time I see them. But I think that's a good choice that we've done, and I think things are certainly getting better.
I agree. In fact, I've ordered a set of tire deflators, I found automatic tire deflators that I could screw on, and by the time I drive to the ramp, the tires are down to 10 pounds and just drive right on out there. Of course, I got to stop and blow them all back up again when I get back, but I got a compressor for that. I had one other question come up, and maybe the county attorney might be able to help address the framework of this, I'm not sure. I know in many areas, it's common practice to bait fields for hunting later in the fall, but some people expressed the four-wheel driver's concern about people actually putting corn out for, apparently attracting deer or whatever, but the horses get into it. It's really bad for horses to eat corn, particularly moldy corn, and are wondering if there was anything could be done about that. I don't know if there's any potential for creating some restriction as to what types of baiting of animals can be done. Me, for the life of me, I can't imagine why anybody would want to bait deer into their yard up there. They say it's evidently people putting out feeders in their yards, because deer not only mean, but they ruin the gardens, but, you know, the horses get into it, and that's a problem, so.
And I think the county does have the authority to adopt an ordinance to that effect. You do have general authority to regulate and control the safety of animals.
I suggested to them perhaps if there was a concern, that they come forward and express that concern to the board to address.
As I understand it, Wildlife Resources Commission and the game wardens are the people who enforces baiting and that kind of stuff. I mean, there's certainly laws on the books now that.
It's not illegal to bait. It's not illegal to shoot over.
I understand that, I understand that. But I mean, what's the purpose of baiting if you're not going to shoot over?
Some people, well, you can bait them and get them coming into an area and then cease baiting them and shoot.
I feed a squirrel every day.
You do? Well, you're not going to shoot him then.
Get him fat enough.
If things get tight.
The other thing I was just going to say, too, regarding the shallowness of the water at the Whalehead, I understand that there's some negotiation underway now to establish some recreational, I would say boating uses up there, because the stand-up paddle boarding that I have discovered is fabulous, and it looks like they're looking forward to maybe being able to put some operation up there that would allow people to do that right there at Whalehead, which I think would be a great attraction for that area.
As long as the skag on the board itself is not more than three inches, you won't have a problem.
And the interesting thing I found out about those is that if you're out on a stand-up paddleboard in the surf, it's a surfboard, but if you're in flat water, you got to have a life preserver, because it's now a vessel. But that's all I had tonight. Mr. Scanlon, how about you?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing tonight, all right, thank you. Then, we're done with the open session business, we need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Make sure we say, "For the purpose as stated in the agenda."
Well, at least that, or I suggest someone just read as the motion, the language that's in the agenda itself. Okay, Ms. Gilbert, you made the motion, I think, why don't you read it?
I make a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-31A, Tac 11A3, to consult with the county attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to receive advice from the county attorney regarding a potential claim against the county, and for the following pending lawsuits, Minnick versus Curry Tuck County, Etheridge versus Curry Tuck County, RF London Inc. versus Curry Tuck County, and Friedman versus Curry Tuck County.
Is it all? We only have four? Okay. Have a second, motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? All right, we'll move to closed session.